This time we call the meeting to order. Ification?
By God, heaven, we thank you for tonight, God, and we thank you for the sun, and I just pray that you be with these people as they govern over the city and give them wisdom and and allow everybody to be kind as they speak tonight, God, and I just pray that you bless the session in Jesus name we pray. Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever. There any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we need to add, because you have sessions that would give the most motion sheets in front of you, one will be for will probably be business data is to start, and then we have a preliminary discussions about real estate, and then we also have an attorney by privilege. Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
They moved by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Moving on to public comments, this is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and please leave me your comments to three minutes. Does anyone like to make a public comment?
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
I'm Kevin Steiners. I live at six oh eighty sixteenth southeast corner town and lived there since, I think nineteen ninety five, my wife and I built a house, raised two boys there. And the neighborhood has during been a pretty dang good neighborhood, except for a couple of minutes. Well, no, I'm just kidding. Try and keep it kind here, thank you. Yeah, I know Ellen, he lives at the top of the hill. I live below him about four or five houses. Um, over the course of the last year, there, there are two trailer houses that are to the west of us. Um, if you can imagine sixteenth and Archer, it's below spot just below us. If you go up the hill, there are two trailer houses on the north side of the house that are on pretty good sized lot. And here, I'd say within the last year, the folks that live in those trailer houses have four wheelers. And they have created a little mini, I'll call it a racetrack. I don't know another word to really describe it. It's a racetrack that the dirt path is become clear, but the, uh, the four wheelers are loud um, to a point where you can be watching your favorite basketball team or whatever on TV and you have to turn the sound up in order to hear it. Not all the time, but just when they come down to the bottom half. When they go back to the top, it's still loud, but just not as loud. I don't know if there's a city ordinance or anything like that. Uh, I don't know who owns the land. I haven't done any research um, regarding that. We've called the police four times. Um, I don't know if anybody physically has come to visit with them about it or not. Um, I try, I try not to do that myself and go out there and confront them about it. You never know what you're gonna get when you do something like that, no matter how nice you are about it. Um, I can't speak, I won't speak on behalf of my other neighbors, but other neighbors have mentioned it. Um, and it started again now that the weather is nice. And as it gets nice, it becomes more of a habit that they're out doing it. And quite honestly, it's loud. I would be willing to bet that any of you would probably be, you know, asking about if there's an ordinance or trying to do something about it, if it was affecting you, it's that loud. We lived there since nineteen ninety five. It's great neighborhood. Concordia apartments are closed, uh, never been that loud there either. Um, and this really has become a nuisance, and I fear that it's just gonna get worse now. They get more comfortable doing it. Don't really know what I'm asking for tonight, just for you to listen, uh, if there is an ordinance or something can be tightened up a little bit. Um, or, or what, you know, what can happen, uh, just so that it doesn't become a habit and they're not doing it more. So, uh, that's what I was here to speak about. Appreciate you listening to me. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Appreciate that.
I have a quick question. Is the property, is it within city limits?
It is.
Okay, I'm just having.
It is. Uh huh. Yeah, it's right on sixteen street. Um, I don't know the north south street above us. Spruce, spruce, so it's between Archer and Spruce, and it, it takes most of that block. There's a gentleman on the corner low, has a little bit of a backyard, and it's a pretty good sized lot. Um, I don't know who owns it. Uh, I know the Star family for a period of time owned it. I don't know if they still do or not. Uh, didn't investigate to go that far. I just, uh, I talked to one commissioner about the other night. I appreciate his ear. I normally don't do something like that, but we just felt like, you know, if we can do something, we'd like to do it. So. Thanks for listening. Any other questions?
I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks so much.
Does anyone else want to make a public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's Alden Wilber. I live at six fifteen one eight sixteenth street. And, um, the reason I'm here, I received this questionnaire in the mail on the water department, so whatever. And being a sensitive guy I am, I didn't take it very well. Uh, at any rate, just got off the phone with Elaine Bowers a few nights ago. And she said that there's only one thing on this whole thing that we're required to do, and that's the entry into your house. Um, this whole thing and the cover letter and whatever was very heavy handed in my estimation and very disrespectful to people of this community. Um, it could have been handled a lot better. She said the only thing that we're required to do with the entrance pipe into the house and the size and, and what it is. And I'm under the impression that, uh, this could be handled by city people a whole lot better than the homeowner. All you gotta do is get in the meter pit and it's right there. And they could put that down as to what it is, whatever, whatever questions they need. And, uh, this whole thing just seemed way overboard. And when I called down here to the office, it's very hard to talk to anybody and find anything out. So, uh, it was kind of left to, uh, devices to find out what the heck's going on. But at any rate, I think it would be helpful if this was put out to the public that all this stuff is not necessary. And, uh, there's a whole lot better way to handle it than what, what it was put out. So, uh, at any rate, uh, I have, um, now, what are our papers here? She said that this was put out by the KDHE, uh, requirement or whatever. And that I've even got a telephone number for the KDHE if somebody was interested in calling. And, uh, she said that Kathy or Rob at this number, which is seven eight five three six eight seven one three zero. And that they would be able to explain what's going on and what is required. Said there may be more later on coming out, but right now all it is is the entrance pipe into your house. Um, the cover letter made it sound like that they was going to show up at your house with a backhoe and immediately dig up your yard and come into your house and inspect and on and on and on, and that is not the case. So there's something, somebody got a little bit excited on, on what was, uh, what was done, so.
Appreciate that.
Any rate, that's all I had. Thank you.
Other comments? No one else? On the last? Okay.
Okay, let's do. This, this go correct?
My name is Terry Harris of five thirteen Willow. Here in Concordia. I think we're gonna be. Okay, I'm concerned about the EPA mandatory regulations for control of lead and copper in our, uh, water supply. Uh, and this will take effect on sixteenth of October twenty twenty four, not just the lead service line inventory is required by then. Our program is mandated and will come into effect. It's in the interest of this, of the, uh, public to understand the economic impact of this new regulatory law how it will affect our water rates, our personal homeowner financial liability. As this gentleman was kind of referring to. Especially when it comes to remediation and replacement of lead lines that the homeowner is responsible for. It's my understanding that at the heart of this is the creation of a lead service line inventory, which will determine the tap water sampling. Uh, these samples will be used to trigger service line replacements and other requirements which will cost community. Okay, so that, that's an important, uh, important understanding is that, uh, first of all, we have very good water. I don't want anybody to think we don't. Uh, but if we should ever exceed an action limit, then the full weight of federal government via the state's implementation will come down on this community. And that has an economic cost and an impact. Funding may be available from the state of Kansas for, uh, program implementation, including the lead service line, uh, inventory. I, I spoke with, uh, Rocky Avenue today. As we may have, who is heading up this program. He tried to explain to me all the options, but they kind of, you know, money's not my thing. But somebody needs to look into funding that's available. It appears that most of that funding is for disadvantaged community, communities. I'm not sure we're one of those. But there is money available, and that includes the inventory, the remediation program, the administration, everything. State has thirty three, almost thirty three million dollars set aside. The feds put out fifteen billion for the entire, for the entire United States in the, uh, the last, uh, economic impact, uh, uh, legislation. So understanding that our utility department has not been budgeted for the required record search to complete the lead service line inventory. To expedite or to expect the department to work through, uh, regular processes in their normal workday workload will only cost us time, time we, we can't waste. And I'll get to that in a minute.
Mr. Harris, there's about ten seconds left of the three minutes.
Okay, I urge this committee to respond with increased effort to make the, uh, public aware of the economic risks to fund the lead service line initiative and to apply for federal and or state funds with all haste.
Appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the concern, uh, that's been voiced, uh, about this. Uh, with one of the things I think it's important for all of our community members to know is that we, we don't take these things lightly. We, we do our best to do our best. Um, any effort, uh, that was expressed in the cover letter was not meant to be heavy handed or threatening, but try to help folks know some of the pressure that we're receiving, trying to do the best we can to respond to this.
You're not directing these at me, are you?
Uh, no, no, no. Um, just that, that we it's a, it's, it's an important thing for us to figure out. It's an important thing for us to do right. We're doing what we can to do that. I think that we are open to feedback. We are open to hearing those concerns. Um, we, we want to do the best job we can. I had someone come up to me personally and, and talk to me about their concerns. Um, they didn't know how to tell the difference between different pipes in their home. Um, they, they, they don't, they don't uh, told them that there'd be somebody that would be happy to help them out. Somebody else said that they were concerned about a possible, uh, potential invasion of privacy. Um, that's certainly not our intent. Our main priority is try to make sure that everybody has good, safe access to water and that we as a city are doing what we can to provide that and to make sure that we're aware of whatever's going on. We're also trying to avoid any potential fines or fees that we may get charged as a city if we don't show due diligence in pursuing this effort. So balancing the, the needs of a community, the needs that we have as a city and directives that we are provided, right, is, is kind of a difficult balancing act to, to conduct, but it's one that we are trying to do what we can. I think there is room for additional conversation. I think that that conversation can be had if people have ideas or solutions. I'm, I'm a big fan of folks bringing up solutions to a table when they identify concerns. Um, so this is something that, that I've heard people are worried about, they're stirred up about. And, and we're, we're doing what we can to try to identify that. So I, I hope that folks can trust the government, which is, I think, uh, you know, we're not the government, we're your neighbors. Right? We're not the state, we're your neighbors. Right? I, I got the same letter in my mail that everybody else did. You have a question?
Well, I, I have a comment. I, I, I would like this, this committee to make a public hearing on this very topic for educational purposes.
I think that.
Very near future.
I appreciate that recommendation. We'll see, you know.
It's not, it's not required, but we have done, um, there was press release today. Russell put together a great interview and another good article, and something out and made interest in it, and then the letter that went out, all the water bills. So if there's more information that needs to be had.
Oh, there, there's so much more, ma'am. The ramifications of this, this could be a nothing burger for us, quite frankly. We do have good water. We probably, we've never exceeded an action limit in the entire history since nineteen ninety one of all tap water samples. This really doesn't kick in until you exceed an action limit. So this could be a nothing burger for our community. It'd also be an economic disaster.
So for, for the purposes of tonight, I think it's really, I appreciate you guys coming to my, for the purposes of tonight, it's really important to understand that this is a mandate from KDHE to the city of Concordia that we must make this inventory. And there is, uh, twenty six columns spreadsheet, Jeremy, I understand, right, of answers that we have to provide. We did our best to make the survey as short as possible to ask for help from, for our residents to fill in that information. But that is all of the information we can provide on every water service in Concordia before that deadline that you mentioned. So I would ask to check that we go ahead and include in public comments if we could, please, and then move on to our agenda. But again, appreciate your comments. We'll think of your advice, your recommendations.
I think you're kind of downplaying the record.
We're the foundation.
And that, that's what's onerous, and that's what, that's what, uh, Jeremy needs for, for e- extra budget to get through, because if you try to do it with just the normal resources, it could take a very long time.
We appreciate that, and I, I think that there is opportunity for other conversation outside of public comments. Are there any other individuals in the room that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, anyone online? Appreciate the folks that are willing to come up to a meeting and talk. It's important to have that feedback. It's not easy, so I do appreciate that. Moving on to the proclamations, recognitions, uh, presentations, the public hearing for unsafe and dangerous properties at two twenty three West Eleventh Street.
Oh. That's where the public hearing is not required based on memo here. I started that process just to make sure it was gonna get done, but the, uh, uh, resolution here is due to a lot of the money to be returned uh, for the, uh, car damage house there, uh, West Eleventh Street again, and there's two twenty three West Eleventh.
And I spoke with the, uh, the owner of the property and thought that within the next thirty days, it should be.
Yeah, vinyl siding is the issue. Vinyl windows and vinyl siding are like, are, are hard to come by. It's a long time now. Sorry, I had to be on. And it's almost happened, but so.
Yeah.
No real hold, so.
Okay.
Recommendation is to prove that resolution and have it proceed to term.
We'll get that taken care of in the actual. Moving on to the minutes of the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty three meeting.
I moved to approve the, the minutes of the February fifteen twenty twenty three.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of February fifteen, two thousand twenty three. Are there any further, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number four.
I moved to approve appropriation ordinance number four.
Second.
The move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve appropriation ordinance number four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to resolution twenty twenty three twenty one fifty one, unsafe and dangerous property two twenty three West Eleventh Street. This is the property that Luna just spoke about.
I moved to approve resolution twenty twenty three twenty one fifty one.
So move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty three twenty one fifty one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty three thirty one ninety seven, nuisance.
And I'm mentioning for proposing some updates to our nuisance ordinance, and at, at where this came at a request of the last time that we discussed some nuisances from you guys, and so we did take an effort to look through that, to look at what some of the communities are doing. What we'd like to do is to take our sections of the weeds nuisance ordinance and the everything else nuisance ordinance, um, except vehicles. We haven't gotten that far yet. We want to start out with the, the junk and the grass and the weeds part of the nuisance ordinance, get that updated here before growing season starts in March. Uh, we will make sure that we can add a step to that process in which we send those nuisance violations to municipal court first before sending our city crews out to evade those nuisances. That was, um, already really written in, but we wanted to kind of highlight that, that effort. Um, I hope, it hopes that maybe that separate going to court will inspire folks to go ahead and take care of their nuisance before they actually have to come to court and incur those additional fees and, and, and direct it from the judge. We're also hopeful that that does take away some of the workload from our city staff. As we talked for the last several years, we've been pretty short on our seasonal, uh, park staff, which does, uh, cause us delays in the evade nuisances as well, because we typically put those as lower priorities compared to what, what city property are. So in this ordinance, and I apologize that that's not the red line version that's in our pocket, so, um, make some comments of that. Yeah, that, that would be really, really help to draw our, our attention, the, the areas that we heard, that we're gonna discuss. Do you guys mind if we go on to one of the next items?
Sure.
All the way down that. Okay, I apologize for that.
No, no, uh, animal control vehicle.
So I'd like to look at replacing the animal control vehicle. Our current animal control vehicle is a two thousand eight Ford F one fifty is um, underneath is really starting to get some pretty good rust on it. There's some surface rust coming through. The vehicle has, like I said, approximately eighty thousand miles on it. Um, those are all city miles, so it's a lot of start and stop. Um, so I, I, I talked to the city mechanic about it and, um, it's when it went into the last little change, he had to do a couple repairs to it, but he believes that if we, we keep driving, it's gonna start nickel and diming us. So I put out for a couple bids. Um, the first bid was, uh, it came back as Boyd GMC, but it's actually owned by, um, Concordia Chevy for a they, their bid came back as a twenty twenty three GMC Sierra crew cab, four by four, a forty one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, and then Farm Country gave us two different options, um, uh, twenty twenty three Ford F one fifty crew cab, four drive, um, a forty four thousand six hundred and ninety ninety nine dollars and thirty two cents, and then they also bid a extended cab of forty two thousand six hundred and ninety nine. So Boyd Buick was the cheapest of forty one thousand four hundred and twenty, and I believe after talking this morning that, um, this animal control truck would be passed down to the parks department to do spraying and stuff.
Possibly.
Possibly, um, and then we would, um, put the parks department blue or
The gray.
The gray truck on purple way. Um, our current animal control, she uses this on daily, um, for transporting vehicle, vehicles, sorry, transporting animals back and forth to the shelter, picking up stray animals, um, transporting dog food. And, um, if there's any off duty, um, while she's off duty, if officers have a dog at large, they come down and get that vehicle to transport the dogs, so we're not transporting on patrol cars. Is there any questions?
Chris, do you want to share a little bit why, why this, this kind of came up in discussion this morning as, as opposed to just getting rid of this truck? Passing down the park?
Yeah, just possibly, because we talked about the past, that gray truck for the parks, the transmission's going out again on it, and it's the second transmission in that truck. So if this is a serviceable vehicle that we can maybe swap and get us by a little longer, uh, I've been talking with, um, Farm Country and Chevy a little bit, trying to keep track of their truck availabilities and stuff like that. So uh, we still, if that doesn't work, we'll still be going out to bid to replace that truck again, to see if we can find something. If not, if it's serviceable, then we just might as well for that same truck we've been talking about plus, so.
This truck is still available.
Uh, the, the the one from the forty, yes, it's on their lot. They have it in stock right now.
The other two.
The other two would have to be ordered, it'd be six months out.
Excellent.
Yeah, I moved to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty three GMC Sierra crew cab from Concordia Chevy Buick for forty one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Second. Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the purchase of the two thousand twenty three GMC Sierra group cab Concordia Chevy Buick, forty one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes. Do you want to go through the rest of the, uh, the, the other vehicle or go back to the, um, nuisances?
It's the vehicle if you want.
The command two fire vehicle.
Good evening. Concordia Fire Department like to replace, actually be command vehicle one is what we're replacing, kind of, around by what? Um, it's a two thousand, uh, what we're looking at doing is trying to replace it. It's a two thousand two F two fifty, and it's got a hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. And we took it out on a call and we blew a head gasket and it got extremely hot, and it's that seven three motor which we like, that's why we kept it for so long. But with that, it's gonna cost anywhere from six to eight thousand dollars to fix it. So it's good to, we thought it might be best to replace it. What we'd like to do is replace it. That would actually then become our second out command vehicle that stays here, and the captain's use, that way they can move around the hazmat trailer and that kind of stuff. And then I would take the red truck that are using now as a chase vehicle. Um, we put out to bids, we got one bid back from Farm Country Ford for a base price of fifteen thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty eight cents. Uh, we need a brush guard on the front and a headache crack for a light bars. So that's another two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and they suggested the underboards at four hundred and five dollars. So with that being the total, uh, uh, fifty what was it here? Fifty four thousand. It was just right here.
Seven seventy one.
Seven seventy one eighty eight, um, for all the options. And that would put everything back to where we need for command vehicle.
This, we're talking about a two fifty, that doesn't seem like a bad price from what I've heard.
Whereas when we seen the bids, um, I think Farm Country put a pretty sharp pencil to that myself, and that's
no, two other folks that might want to take advantage of that.
But I don't think you can get it that sharp, but they, they got it pretty sharp for us.
And, uh, who files the vehicle? I didn't ask on the last one, but, um, to change, like obviously like the police vehicle, that'll have to come off, and then your, uh, your truck will need to be labeled also. Does the city?
We've already.
Service department?
Uh, my firefighters.
You guys.
Took it off.
Okay.
It's out back and it's stripped down, ready to go on purple way. I think if this is approved.
And then we typically use Mark Hendrick to put new labels on the new vehicles that they get.
And a motion to approve the purchase.
I moved to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty three Ford F two fifty XL from Farm Country Ford for fifty four thousand seven hundred and seventy one dollars and eighty eight.
Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the purchase of the two thousand twenty three Ford F two fifty XL for Farm Country Ford for fifty four thousand seven hundred and seventy one dollars and eighty eight cents. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Chief, while you're up here, just, uh, move on to acceptance of the grant and authorization to purchase any buildings caught system.
Um, this is a grant that, uh, Amy filled out all the information. I got her, appreciate her doing such a good job and be successful in this. This is the load system out of our, for a medic unit and cot. What this would do is it's a load system comes out and will basically pick up the whole entire cot, and with one hand, you can load somebody. Um, the benefit of doing this, we're getting more and more females running through, and everyone's getting bigger, and it's just getting harder and harder to let people, we're hurting. It's just getting harder and harder to let people hurt their backs and that kind of stuff. So this makes it just a nice way to make it safer to load people. It is an expensive project that caught itself fifty one thousand or the cotton power load system is fifty one thousand nine hundred forty four dollars. And then it has a service contract of sixteen thousand six hundred seventy six dollars and twenty one cents. The.
For seven years.
For seven years. The grant would cover the cotton load system and then the city would pick up the uh service contract for the next seven years. This would make it easy and protect our firefighters. We don't injure our backs like what we've been doing in the past.
I had a question on that. Service contract. Because on their bid, it didn't say it was seven years. That I can see. I wondered whether this, I mean, it's logical for that prize and hope that it was seven years, but.
There is another paper that gets a little bit.
More need.
Contract of it.
Yeah, that was my question too, Marsha, because it says in the write up that they are to pay for the service agreement for one year.
Right.
But the sixteen thousand is seven years total, right? Not sixteen thousand a year.
Sixteen thousand per seven years.
In addition to the first year that it's covered.
Correct, eight years.
Eight years total.
They suggest the cops only be be used for about ten years. And we've got cops out there that were here when I was here working. This will help get that process to start getting replaced.
Thanks for looking for grant money for this. So with that, I'd move to accept the grant from the Angie Hansen Foundation and approve the purchase of the striker power load system and cop with a seven year service agreement for a total of sixty eight thousand six hundred twenty dollars and twenty one cents.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to accept the grant from David Danson Foundation and approve the purchase of the striker power load system. And cop with a seven year service agreement, uh total of sixty eight thousand six hundred twenty dollars, twenty one cents. Is there any further discussion?
Is is that seven year service? Is that paid annually? Like, is it divided up or do you just pay that upfront?
Believe it's a one time.
How long has that company been in business?
That company's been in business for the twenty plus years that I know of that I've been working with them.
The the cop, the hospital beds and it's a huge.
It's a huge company and the service. Guy that would be coming and selling these is Bryce Reed Wheeler, who is originally from Concordia.
Wondered if that would.
Yeah, so. He's always taken pretty good care of us.
I think it's important to note too that Angie Hansen Foundation did make it clear in their award letter that this was the one and done. Grant award for this project. We have four ambulances that we run and so it's going to be really important as we work through our next budgeting cycles that we allocate funds if we want to do this and more than one ambulance. And on our grant application, we did intend to work toward fully equipping our ambulances going forward. We'll need to take a look at that. We never know. Um, well, we've got more than one ambulance going out at a time right now.
There's motion on tables. Are any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Way back to ordinance twenty twenty three thirty one ninety seven nuisances.
Thank you for your flexibility, commissioners. I've been looking at this as a staff with the red line version, so that's where my brain was headed. So. Um, if we go through um. Addition of some definitions of what are types of nuisances, section thirteen one oh one A, we added uh to number five, we added construction debris. Um, we added number six that also. States any fence structure thing or substance placed upon or being in any street sidewalk alley or public grounds so as to have struck the same except as permitted by laws from the city. So a vehicle parked in the street legally is not going to be considered a nuisance. But if somebody were to put a pallet of construction materials in the street or blocking the sidewalk, then that could be considered a nuisance if we couldn't see active progress as as an example. Um, to numbers, what would become number seven then, we did add to the foul substances, discarded grease, oil, fuel, whether in containers or on the ground. Filth, excrement, carcasses of dead animals or places where animals are kept in in an offensive manner. This was interesting language that we found from Harvard, Kansas, and um they actually had a situation where they had a person who was in the business of uh. Obtaining pelts and they had a trailer full of pelts on i- i- in their right of way that started getting rank after a while. Now, we know that we are a hunting community, so we're not intending to say you can't do taxidermy here. There are some home based businesses that do that, but it's a matter of if. That practice becomes offensive to the neighbor. So if if there becomes. Um, as an example, carcasses of dead animals sort of the garage or a freezer that goes rank for a month because somebody doesn't live there and you can smell it to houses down. For example, that's when we would go in and say we've got a nuisance going on, but just your general business associated with your general hunting operations, we're not going to call that a nuisance. Um, any questions on that part of it?
Should it be, should it be in there, you know, that additional information about it?
Probably not in the ordinance. I think that's more of an explanation as opposed to just the definition and the types, but uh these are reflective of some challenges and nuisances that we've had over the last couple of years. That weren't really fitting into a specific category that we had a hard time getting addressed. That's the reason for adding these definitions. Um, in letter C, we added the word administrative to kind of clarify because administrative order was a good pairing of words that we saw consistently throughout, except. There are a few spots we wanted to clarify that, especially because we're um clarifying that we're now going to send things to municipal court. So we wanted to delineate very clearly between an administrative order that starts with staff versus a a court order that comes from the judge when the nuisance gets to gets to the court. Um, we did start last year also posting written notice in front yards and Lou certified letters. Now, we do still send certified letters to property owners that do not live in town. And the reason for that is to make sure those property owners do receive the with the notice that that their tenant may be having a violation. But we found um effectiveness from posting the notice in the yard. Uh, number one, it lets the person living there, if they're not the property owner, know that the nuisance violation is occurring and that we're um monitoring that. It also lets the general public uh driving by of it. They're very, our our public is very, very good about letting us know when there is a nuisance violation and and we do appreciate that. So this lets them know, hey, we've got this. It's already on our radar. So that that's been a helpful communication tool. We do intend to adjust the type of sign that we use this year to make it more noticeable and more solid than it is a nuisance violation. Last year, we laminated some pieces of paper and stuck them to a rebar fence post and that didn't last very well in the wind and the rain that happened, um especially when they're there for, they can't be there for up to thirty days or so. So we're looking at a more beefy sign that will withstand the elements and make use of um. Tools that real estate agents may use, such as an information tube on top to put the specific violation information inside, but the generic sign would be more heavy duty. So we're still looking into that for this year. Uh, we added letter D, um just saying that it it adds that um. Ability to send this to municipal court as a misdemeanor. That that wording was already in the section for weeds, but not in the general nuisance category. So we made those the same. We did also clarify an E that in in addition to prosecution, we may have uh things removed from the parcel of ground, meaning we can send city staff in there to do the abatement. We added uh F and G, which are right of entry and unlawful interference with a public officer that goes to do abatement. Again, these sections were already in the section on weeds, but we put them in there with the general nuisance section. So if we have that discarded. Trash or construction debris, for example, in a front yard, we've now made it so that a public officer can go in there and take it and that it can be a violation of this ordinance for somebody to interfere with that taking. Under weeds, it would be thirteen one oh three. See, we did add the posting of a written notice in the front yards that allows us to put that sign in the front yard, could have just relied on the certified letter. And I should add that that came from, that was one of the effects of COVID is we found out that our mail slowed down, especially certified services. The postal service made an adjustment. In twenty twenty that allowed um. When postal workers would deliver a or attempt to deliver a certified letter instead of having three deliveries within ten days, if you go to three deliveries within thirty days. And so that just drew drew out our nuisance uh notifications. So that's where we decided to start adding the signs instead.
While you're on that section, I had a question about you can only do it once per calendar year.
We only have to do it once per calendar year. So let's say that you have a a lot and we do have this. Let's say we have a lot that is a vacant property with an absentee property owner. And they tend to use this as their landscape and services. So say we notify them in March that their grass is fifteen inches tall and we go into evade it. Then if it grows to another fifteen inches tall in May, we don't have to go through the process of sending them a notice for posting sign. We can just go in and evade it and then bill them for that as well. So that's what that means. And we do have that occasionally.
Now, well, it was in that section.
Later in weeds, uh we talked to um under D, we talked about um. The city can pursue a collection by leaving a special assessment um and in the matter provided by KSA twelve um one 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 five. So basically that aligns with the section under general nuisances now that allows us to either send. Uh, bills for the abatement that city does either to special assessments, which we're not very good about collecting, or to send them to collections. But if we go to collections, then we have to run things through district court. There's another process there, but that's helpful. Again, in those tenant situations where you have a tenant that's supposed to maintain their yard, if they can't maintain their yard. Um, it's uh not always effective to punish the property owner and put it on special sessions with the property owner. It may be more effective to attach that bill to the tenant and it'll follow them through the collections process, if that makes sense. So it's just just kind of depends on the situation that we're dealing with in the history that we've had. And again, we um moved around where it should be, um where it it would be. We can take them to court and call it a a misdemeanor for not addressing the nuisance um after we posted the notice in the yard or sent the certified letter. So again, the process is now going to be um no courtesy letter because we've talked about this enough. We put it out publicly what a nuisance is. It's available on our website. And very clearly what what would define a nuisance. So we will send a certified letter to absentee property owners, post the notice in the yard that will have ten days to uh get rid of the nuisance. If that doesn't happen, we'll go back at it ten days and then we will send them a court order so they'll show up at the next municipal court. I've adjusted a little bit that this may require us to add a second court session in the month. Um, which is what we used to do until volume dropped a little bit. So we'd have to add a second court session. And then if the court order is not invited by the judge, the judge likely to give them another ten days, for example, if the if that's not effective. Then city crews will be asked to go out and evade the nuisance. We had a preseason meeting with our staff here. And decided that our goal, what's related where that we have to do it is within a week. Uh, again, that that may stretch out if it is. Right before Memorial Day or Fourth of July or Labor Day, when our parks crews that end up doing most of this are more geared toward getting the cemetery and the parks in good shape. But generally, within a week, we're going to try to address the business. Does that meet the intent of what you guys have helped us to meet?
My hope would be that this entire section would be not necessary because people would be responsible for their stuff and not require action in the city's party.
That would be amazing.
Uh, seems like this kind of helps shore up some of those grayer areas that allow us to take action when folks are struggling to take action.
And we know that we still have some work to do. We still need to do some working review, um junk vehicles, abandoned vehicles and trailers. Trailers in specific are giving us some some challenge because of where it could fit and what we can do. Um, and I know you and I talked a little bit about parking vehicles in a front yard. We're not real sure if that hits nuisance or if that's a property maintenance code or if that is a leave it alone. That is more of a um. Using private property in the middle that you see fit. So I mean, you need some more exploration on that as well.
Unless it's in the median.
Yeah, things things in the right of way, we can address, we can address differently.
Wichita has had an ordinance that any vehicle parked had to be parked on a designated parking space. Uh, that could be gravel, concrete, um but. Ruts where you normally park didn't qualify as a designated parking area, so.
I've had some places even go so far as to say, well, it's considered an abandoned vehicle. Um, if there's no work being done to it or if it's not tagged. Um, so then we'll say, hey, that's an abandoned vehicle. Oh, I'm working on it. We're not seeing any progress. And so because those can actually become attractive nuisances, so. They can, listen, they can crawl in there, hurt themselves and the landowner or the homeowner is going to be responsible for that. Um, also, uh, they can become unsafe as well. So.
You said that was Wichita. I have that. We can look and see what their language is and maybe that would help us out with that.
Yeah, and and Lawrence, they have, um, they call it the good neighbor work nets. And it's.
Don't park in your front.
Yeah. Um, speak of Manhattan, Kansas City, Olathe, I think Shawnee, most small towns don't seem to have that though. So that's.
Delphus does. Their abandoned vehicles.
Well, not not abandoned vehicles, parking like working vehicles that you're driving every day.
Yeah, they'll go out and park it where we are and everything.
But.
Folks, for places that we that I've noticed that happening, is it because there's lack of space on the street? Or I mean, I just, I'm not aware.
No.
No, okay.
I would say no. Some of them are on snow now, so.
Oh, okay.
I just. And and I could understand the the not wanting to park on the street.
Yeah.
Um, for, you know, ever any reasons, but I would say. They do have probably lack of space on their property to add maybe additional drive some of them. Um. There is, there is parking on the street though in all of those locations to my knowledge that I've that I've noticed and it was brought up to me by someone else. So I should just asking if it was included in.
As as a gift for passing my driver's license exam, my dad. Supervised my effort to build a driveway off of our driveway. Well, if you're going to park it here, then. We don't need extra driveway space. Sounds like you do.
So anyway, my point is the ordinance tonight is going to focus on the basic junk trash weeds, tall grass, but we still have some work to do on the vehicles and the trailers.
I appreciate the timely nature of it and again, hopefully. Folks can. Make this to where this is the relatively. An accessible ordinance.
I moved to approve ordinance twenty twenty three thirty one ninety seven.
Move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve ordinance twenty twenty three thirty one ninety seven. Is there any further discussion?
The, so if it is a rental property, are they still, are you still notifying the, like even though the sign goes in the yard, you still notify the owner as well? So that they will, and rentals would still have the letters that their tenants not caring for the property as well.
In town or out of town, right?
I've listened. I I know for sure they're out of town. Yeah, because they find the owner on the Ken website. Do they go off of that name?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, executive session. Before or after reports?
We we can do it after that.
Managers report.
Um, there should be another preliminary meeting with Kansas Housing Resource Commission last week. This week, we received the draft agreement for review and access to the portal. What we do with the grant management and providing monthly reports and uploading documents. So we're working through that process for both. The M I H grant and the cloud hopes working through it for the the housing tax credits. Our first report interested in the US due today. So two days in, we got our first reported. That's great. Um, we'll have that grant agreement before you at the March fifteenth meeting for your acceptance of that. Um, also just a reminder, the quad corp luncheon and Y E C trade show on Monday. I do believe our table is now full. So appreciate all those students that are going to attend. Um, the trade shows that were the public book before and after the luncheon to do to go visit those those trade show booths. Um, three cent of bills that we're looking at, that we're kind of watching, um, two twelve died and Board of VMS is supposed to be working with with cities to resolve the issue. As of today, we have not yet received a call from Board of VMS, um, Eric's monitoring that that information with his his contacts there. Senate Bill two fifty two is a government competition bill. And that's one that basically says if there's a service or goods that the city sells. To the general public that is in direct competition with a privately owned business within the county, that business could request a property and sales tax exemption. So where this uh. Makes the most sense to me and could really impact us would be concession stands, for example, so. Uh, or Chris offers hamburger hamburgers and hot dogs out at the ball fields, which hot dogs go with baseball. That's important. Mine just like popcorn goes with basketball. Uh, that could be viewed in direct competition with the restaurant, for example. So then if that bill were to pass and we continue to offer hamburgers and hot dogs at the ball fields, then any restaurant in Concordia that also offer hamburgers and hot dogs could request a property and sales tax exemption. Which would directly impact our revenue here. Beneficial to the business that can help it, right, impact our revenue. Um, another area that it impacts is daycare. So if we think about the daycare center that the college offers or that the school district offers, that would impact um. Private daycares and that they could then request a property tax exemption if if the school and the college continued to offer that for a fee for service. So we're watching that bill fairly closely too, because that would be a major change to the way our operations have our operations occur. Senate Bill two forty eight is the uh food sales tax exemption. Um. And I did not take a look at it as of today, actually, you've heard much on it, but it went into the Senate. As being state sales tax exemption only on food. And it came out as state and local sales tax exemption on food and food ingredients. So I'm working to get some clarity on that. Before inflation really hit, we had done some preliminary investigation on this because this was gaining some traction a couple of years ago. And. It can have a pretty significant impact on us. Basic rough numbers were about a. Two hundred and twenty five thousand dollar a year revenue loss to the city's general fund if that were to pass just for groceries. So that's a pretty, pretty big hit for us. So we are watching that one closely. To see, see what happens. But that one did make it out of the Senate. So that's, that's an important one for us. That's all that I have. Happy to answer any questions. Senate Bill two forty eight.
Staff reports?
Construction started on the south end of development. Waterline. Today, well, actually yesterday, but. We made it that today, so. We're underway.
Good.
Thanks.
And staff reports? We got the commissioner comments, Marsha?
I don't know at this time. I got to see the airport this weekend and it looks very nice. And just kind of a review of kind of the plans. Like in the future, where they're headed with it. And I also saw that they're. I know that the. The car, I think it's going to be auctioned off, but it was in a. Something that they had, it was notable from somebody that visited. They wrote an article about driving that car.
Very unique, yeah.
Someone flew in for our wedding and loved to drive around Concordia with the courtesy vehicle.
It actually kind of makes me sad that they're getting rid of it because it's just such unusual.
I should keep it.
It's not the right word.
So I was approached, I live fairly close to. Gentleman spoke earlier about the noise. It's pretty impressive. It was interesting enough that my girls went up to the top of the hill to watch. So I think it would be good for us to look into that. It also prompted, I think, you know, I have heard a lot of really positive comments about the direction that you're working in, chief. One of the concerns that he brought up to my attention at that night was. That that they that he had called and was kind of just told there's nothing they can do, which legally may be accurate. But I think. As we're, as we're working to be community minded, I think something that we, you know, legally, it's not necessarily illegal, but I'd be, we'd be glad to go out and just talk with them and let them know that there's been a concern. Sometimes I think that conversation, having a simple conversation can help stem a lot of the the action that takes place. Especially if there's a concern that I'm not sure how they'll respond. You know, and I can appreciate some of that reservation hesitation and me just walking up the hill and say, hey, guys, can you knock it off? So I think that where there is an opportunity for us to try to do something as a city, it'd be good for us to just try. I I know also that there was somebody that. Is actively taking mail from their neighbors. And so maybe just reminding. Officers that that is a federal offense and that would be a good point of intervention. This gentleman. Has also gone into several businesses, creating kind of a ruckus. I think there's a liability to the public that's in place. And so if there's a. There's a pivot point at which we can engage a conversation. Might be good to do that. Despite our best efforts to communicate actively, clearly, it seems like there still is some confusion as to the water. Process, piping. So I don't know if it would be helpful to. Offer a public meeting in which people can voice their concerns and their questions. I appreciate the enthusiasm that we would bring to that meeting. I don't know how else we could do that.
I feel like the anger is a little misdirected. I mean, this is, yeah, this was an EPA thing that came out in twenty twenty one. So I guess. And I spent a lot of time on the phone about this today too, and I have that whole rhetoric of the twenty three things to fill out and. Yes, well, part of the story is you get it up to the house. The other part of the story is they think the rest of this is coming down in September, right? So it's voluntary at this point. The issue is, is that unless we have someone from KDHE or EPA coming in to host said talk, I don't know that it will be productive. So that might be the effort is to see if someone from KDHE is willing to come out and have that discussion.
Fair enough. To be honest, productivity was not my primary. End goal.
Oh, it's mine. I mean, I don't know why we would have wanted productivity is not our end goal.
I find that sometimes people just enjoy being heard. And when they feel like they're not being heard, then we become part of that system. Inviting KDHE and letting folks know that we've, we have sent that invitation because if there are people at state levels who are saying, no, it only has to be this. Then it puts us in a difficult position where that may not be entirely accurate. So if there is that clarification, perhaps someone from that would be willing to.
When I was visiting, when. My inspector. She actually said, I wish my rural water would do this. So. She works for KDHE.
I think it's a good effort and I think we're doing what we can. And I think we're doing all that we can. I don't think that this is a lack of effort on our part. And sometimes, no matter how clear you can be, people are pretty insistent on it not being clear.
It's easy to read into something what you want to read into it.
Absolutely.
I know that we're doing the best that we can and I appreciate you guys on that. Jeremy's been to four workshops. KDHE. To share kind of what guidance seems to be done. So I really do feel like we're doing, doing a good job. Maybe if they heard it from somebody else, they might believe it. But I. I don't know. We haven't had great attendance at holding meetings with having people. Participate, but happy to try if that's.
I've gotten, we've gotten over three hundred surveyed back. In the short amount of time they've been out there, so.
Can you, for my ignorance, I don't know how this works. So if someone had an old lead pipes in their home. Does that affect? That region waters? I mean, how does that affect everyone else? Or does it just affect that household?
It's just that household.
Just that household, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's as far downstream as.
Yeah.
That water can get.
It doesn't flow back into the main line.
Yeah, that's what Mike is.
That's, if that happens, there's a totally different. Different problem.
Yeah.
That's called back site manage.
I think if you, if you knowingly or did investigate your pipes and had lead pipes, knowing that that's a potential expense, also a health hazard. Would maybe make. You make people uncomfortable with with returning the survey, knowing that there's a possibility of that. But you've already made it clear to us as far as the city's lines that that you've worked on, that that you haven't. Come across that.
Not total complete lead services. I've never seen one in in the town.
But if somebody had a water home that still had had that existing, then that could be a significant expense, which hopefully there would be some. Some money is available for, but that's unknown. So I could, I could understand some people's reservation with that.
Sure.
I also agree that if there's a meeting regarding that, that KDHE should be present in the meeting to address those things and make sure that everybody's on the same page. With the whys and whats of the process. So that they're not getting different information from their phone calls and. Just that one.
It appears to me maybe we need it relying here.
I don't know that she, I, she was helpful and connected the dots. I had same conversations with. Folks today. It's just, you know, it's always interesting what parts of the conversation people take in. Yeah, it's true. So I think having KDHE or EPA. Extend that invitation and see if they're willing to come out. I'm guessing I know the answer, but.
But if we, if we could show and demonstrate, and I think we already have to this point, but if we can demonstrate that we are doing what we can to provide the information that people are looking for, there's only so much that we can do. The concern about passing this on to the taxpayer, I'm guessing that there's not any interest in passing on the fee. There would be, or the fine that would be assessed if we don't do this work on to the taxpayer either. So. We are doing what we can. I know that. I believe you. So if we can show, trying to provide that information. I don't know what else we can do, but if there's something, then we can try to do it.
Well, in this workshop, they were actually talking about. Getting it down to. The tap in the house. That's causing the problem. So they're way ahead of theirselves.
That surprises me.
Because some of those old taps were not regularly and, you know, they.
Right, tap into the bank.
No, the taps in your closets and your sinks. So. That's the almost impossible.
I really do appreciate the effort. I think that with confusion, I know that people are squawking how they don't get any information from the city. I have. Don't believe that to be the case. I encourage somebody to call down with questions that they had. Ask them, say, if you don't know, just draw a question mark. If they need more information, they will. This is just trying to get us as close as we can to get the best information. I appreciate the effort.
And as long as if KDHE and the EPA don't want to come, won't come, we just need to tell people that. We've.
We can't provide any more information than what we've done. We've invited the folks to come to the meeting. They've declined that invitation. This is where we are. Here's their number if you'd like to ask them a question.
That's right.
Tried to get to that earlier, Dave, Phil, apologize. This point, we would move on to the executive session confidential business data.
And then the city commission recess into the executive session to discuss confidential business data or trade secrets as a. Of a business KS, KSA seventy five forty three nineteen B four with Amy Lang, Justin Far, Dave Garms, Phil Gillen in attendance and to reconvene in the city commission chamber. At. Six forty.
Forty eight.
Six forty eight.
Need a second. Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to. Move to executive session for that specific reason with those specific people. Reconvene at six forty. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. No action was taken.
I move the city commission recess into executive session for consultation with an attorney for information deemed privileged and the attorney client relationship exception. KSA seventy five forty three nineteen B two with Amy Lang and Justin Farrell in attendance and to reconvene in the city commission chamber at. Seven twenty five.
Sounds super. Need a second.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to. Go into executive session for that reason. Any, any other conversation, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, passes.
Oh, yeah, I see a texture there. It's a big one.
No action was taken. This point, I entertain a motion for adjournment. So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn the meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for.